mandates, that's policy set by us. And we have the right to expect you to be supportive of that. We also feel, I think, that things such as who gets the vaccinations that have been allocated for Rio Blanco County, that's a policy. That's not an operational decision, that's a policy decision. Those should be our decisions. That's just kind of hitting on a few things, and I'll let you guys kind of elaborate from there. But we feel, I think it's fair to say, and I can only speak for myself, but we just feel like we're not getting that support out of you.
I would like you to cite examples of that.
Okay.
Because I don't feel that we've done anything that has not been in support this entire time of the policies you've set.
Well, first of all, I think we set the clear direction that said, we want public health in Rio Blanco County to be supportive, to play in a support role through the medical facilities. We are very aware that there's a lot of friction between the medical facilities and the public health, our public health department. And we've been made very aware of that, and we need to deal with that. And I'll let you guys elaborate if you would.
And Gary's right, Alice. We've had some of our community members in our medical facilities reach out to us, and I think for us, the way I view public health is I think we ought to be a supporting role in our hospitals, and we shouldn't be mandating policies to them. But I'm not sure that's exactly how they feel right now.
I think it's fair to say they feel like there's a lack of trust there, and we're not just talking one facility, we're talking both. It's a very serious issue. So we've got to make sure that you understand what our expectations are, and that's what this is really about. Clearly, I feel like from day one with Winco, you did a great job on a lot of the things you've done, as far as getting these vaccines out, getting the testing done. You've done a fantastic job. But I feel we've been a little misled as to what the relationship has been with these other partners.
I would, again, like you to cite examples.
I think I did, with the hospitals.
But examples, you keep using the word feel. Again, I would love to understand. We have supported our hospitals, we have a fantastic working relationship with them.
And it's been written by the facilities with specific examples as to the conflict that's going on.
And those are?
Lack of trust.
For what reason?
They feel that you're going in there and stop me if I'm stepping overboard here.
We're getting close, so I'm about to.
I know.
But I think, let me just do it this way.
Yeah, try it.
I think I just, I don't want to put words in your house, but I think I just heard you say that you have a fantastic relationship with hospitals.
The people that we work with, definitely, we have not heard complaints, we have not had requests that we haven't fulfilled. There has been no communication, unless there's been communication with the board that has not been directed to my department so we can fix it. We are not aware of any problems that have existed, and I can definitely speak to a situation that occurred with CMS, which is a licensing body for a hospital, has nothing to do with us, that could have been misconstrued. Again, the trust is that you don't trust your public health department in what we're doing, and that is an issue to me.
That's not what I said.
I don't think so. I think, let's stop and let's take it one at a time, because I'm not sure how to articulate this, so give me a second. But I think the fact that you're sitting here telling the Board of County Commissioners, we have an excellent relationship with the hospitals, less than a week after the hospital administrators were expressing grave concern about their relationship with public health, is the point. You don't have a good read of your relationship with either hospital. And that's, don't let me put words in anybody's mouth, you gentlemen, but that is what causes these guys concerned. Is that fair?
So I think the problem is maybe you have a good relationship with who you guys are working with at each individual facility, but there's been instances that the administration feels was overreaching, maybe, or could be taken as kind of throwing them under the bus a little bit. So I think that that's kind of the issue. I mean, you know, we've spent hours, countless hours, doing this stuff together, and I can tell you from, you know, from your seat to changing to this seat, it's vastly different as far as the information that you receive, I guess. I don't think that it's something that's not fixable by any means, I think it's just a lot of communication, and I do understand that you're frustrated and where you guys are coming from, but I think it's also very frustrating, and again, I'm just getting caught up to speed on all of this, but I think it's frustrating when, you know, people don't fully understand the entire picture. I'm trying to be as...
Good, really good.
Also, I'll give you a perfect example.
Thank you.
That doesn't throw anybody under the bus, but let's go to our high school sports right now for mask mandates for playing basketball. You guys don't have the ability to change that, nor do we. But so many people in our community think that you have that ability or this board does. And I think that's probably where we need to get to, is maybe if we get on the same common page between you guys and us, so that, and we're always going to have a little bit of that animosity there where we don't completely agree 100%, but I think if we can send the same message out all the time, coming from Board of Health and this board, I think it'll make a huge difference. And that was kind of the conversation I had with Sarah, is that I just, we need this to work, because when we're in a, this pandemic thing, and I don't think it's going to go away, kids, I wished it was, but I don't think we're going to see it clean up in the next three months. I mean, I truly believe that we're going to be looking at this thing over the next year, at least.
Thank you, Jeff, but again, these are examples of exactly what we've done. We have not once enforced anything. We support our school districts. The reason our kids are in school right now is because of the, again, great relationship, despite what someone might tell you, you might disagree, people can disagree, people have lots of different feelings, but we support our high schools, and we made that very clear. The reason Munka High School is open right now, again, is because we work with our school district. I wrote, we wrote a letter, we just sent to the governor's office, that explained how because of the great relationship we have in our local public health department, this is not the same in other counties, guys, and we have followed your recommendations this entire time. And as far as the hospitals, you must let me defend our department. We are deputized.
You've got to be willing to listen to what we're saying.
Sure, and I am listening.
We did do our homework.
Okay.
We have very major concerns.
And I would like to see that homework.
They feel overreached.
I would like to see where we've overreached, because we have not once.
Let me finish. They feel that they can't trust you when it comes to dealing with CD-PHE. That's just a fact.
It's a fact, it's not a fact.
What we want, what we need you to do, what we need to lay out to you is what we need you to do. We need you to be in a support role for both of our medical facilities, and try to be in a position where they can trust that you've got their best interests at heart, because that's what we expect. I think if there's going to be an issue, that if you've got issues with how they're doing things, I would appreciate it, I think we would appreciate it, if you would come to us and give us the courtesy to share with us what your concerns are. The key here is you work for us. And I'm going to give you another example, of when I say, we feel like you're not necessarily supporting where we're at. Example, when we got kicked into the orange category, and you sent us a draft of a letter you were sending out to the businesses, and it had a paragraph there that said, "The commissioners have not taken a position on this." And I responded back, and I said, "Alice, our position consistently from day one has been that we, the county is not going to enforce state mandates." And your reaction to me was, "Well, I've been saying that all along." Alice, what I was trying to say is change your letter.
And I did, with your recommendations that went out to the businesses.
Oh, okay, I get it.
Oh, I did. With a corrected email and the wording, is this better? Because my intention of that is to state, was to try to follow Todd's and Yorg's advice, then I need to make it clear, this is not coming from the Board of County Commissioners. So when I notify my businesses what's happening on the state level, please, so they know, because they're licensed through DORA, I wanted to protect the board by saying, this didn't come from the Board of County Commissioners.
You're asking, for example, for why we feel the way we do.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I think, I think, Alice, we're talking about two different things, you're exactly right. For those businesses, they need to know that, they need to know what's coming from CD-PHE. I get that. But on the other side, our message needs to be very clear that we don't always agree. I don't think you guys always agree with some of the things CPHD or CD-PHE does.
We have asked you to include in any communication what our position was. I don't think that's been being done at all.
I have asked so many times for guidance, Ty can attest to this, when he was emergency manager. I've asked for work sessions, guidance, phone calls, emails, anything that would give us clear direction, and again, we have not done one thing that has been in opposition of the board. And if you, and again, I need, you cannot make, for example...
You've got to be willing to accept and listen to our direction, that's what we're here today.
And I have, and I maintain that we have this entire time. Again, our hospitals, we have worked with our hospitals, please can I have a, just state, okay? We are deputized, absolutely, you are in charge of what I do and what we do. We follow your direction and guidance, that is absolutely true. What makes us different, Gary, than other departments, is that we are deputized by CD-PHE, I have a contract sitting in my office, I can show you. We are, as an LPHA, to do communicable disease management, immunizations, emergency response to public health emergencies. Every single, by state statute, every single thing we have done has fallen in line with that. We balance, and it's been a hard, fine balance, and I would challenge you to find another county that has been able to protect residents, work with school districts to keep schools open, not had one business closure, you name it, two deaths, worked with our hospitals, again, our role is entirely supportive. There was a complaint filed that did not come from our department, to the body that regulates...
Hold on, hold on. We're not going to talk about another business and about facts that nobody knows or nobody has, and they're not here to clear the record, et cetera. You're not going to do that in public.
Okay, I won't, but I will answer to the claim that we haven't supported our hospitals. And so we have worked, again, our job is to report outbreaks. This is state statute, guys, we do line lists to CD-PHE, we don't pick up the phone call as whistleblowers and say, this person's doing this, this person's doing that. We have actually been told by CD-PHE multiple times during this pandemic, you have options of enforcing, you have options of this. We've declined every time, and we still do, we still do. Just two weeks ago, we were on the phone with CD-PHE regarding our high school outbreak. The recommendation was to close the high school, we said, "No, thank you. Please do not contact our high school, because we will handle this locally." You don't see what we do every day, and you've actually declined and not come to my department to see what's happening on a day-to-day basis. You don't ask how things work with the hospitals, but I've never been asked that question. So to claim these things that you've been having conversations that I haven't been a part of, and to be able to not give concrete examples, the concrete example that Jeff just gave was exactly an example of how we've supported you, because we support our high schools and the kids not having to, you know, enforce the mask mandate. So again, I really need more direction. I came to this meeting today, again, to outline exactly what the expectation is of this board when it comes to validating residency, because I want to make sure I don't get us in trouble. It was to make sure I had direction from you on dial 2.0 regarding how to proceed. Because again, we are required to work with CD-PHE, we are required to educate the public regarding public health recommendations, there is nothing political about this to us. And I want direction, I need direction, but I also need support, because I feel like this board has not supported this department.
And I think we feel like you haven't supported us.
Okay, and we can agree to disagree.
The obligation here is for our departments to support us, that's how it works.
And we've tried to, we've tried in every single way possible.
What you've done as well, but we've got to be able to ask questions without you getting defensive.
Sure.
Anytime we have, I feel there is that tendency, and we think we've all witnessed it. And we're not here to have an argument, we're here to let you know what our expectations are, and I will shut up.
I've had many conversations with these two, and we've talked, and I mean, this coming in a public meeting without giving me preparation, without having one conversation with me about our relationship with our hospitals, is a little unfair. So yes, I am defensive, because they're outright untrue accusations.
Alice, I tell you where I'd like to go with this. I think that I'd like to put a couple bullet points together of what our expectations are just for you guys. Whatever's happened up to today is really water under the bridge. I think for all and all, Rio Blanco County's probably skated through this thing better than any other county in the state, I really do. I mean, if you look at the dials and look at what's going on, but I think that's kind of the conversation I had with Sarah the other day. I truly believe we can make this work, we just need to figure out how we make it work between one another, and I think that's an equitable thing. We have had some phone calls from our medical facilities that express some concerns, but I think at the end of the day, that's probably nothing that can't be resolved either.
But we've got to be able to bring it forth, like we're doing today.
Please do.
That's what we're doing.
First time I've heard this, so please do it more frequently. That would be fantastic, so we can make sure that we're actually doing what you're asking us to do. And I get texts, I have text messages saying things like, "County health needs to move on," that we received. That's offensive to me and my staff. What does this mean? We need direction and guidance from you, we're working overtime, unpaid, to make sure our community needs are met, and we get nothing but overwhelmingly positive feedback from our community, and from our hospitals, and everyone we've worked with. I speak to Kyle Wren, I speak to Karen Iacone frequently, we've had, you know, a couple of questions, things that have come up, we've worked through together, I'm on speed dial for them. So again, if you have a concern, please bring it to me, and I will address it, absolutely.
That's what we're trying to do, but we've got to be able to have that conversation about you being defensive. What we're wanting is to make sure, and I've got notes here, three things, don't overreach, don't set policy, and be professional with us and our partners, like the hospitals. That's our goal here.
You're claiming that we have not done that up until this point, because if that's what the claim is, I completely reject that claim.
I don't think it's so much that that's what Gary's saying, or that we're saying you guys are not, we're not claiming that at all. I think it's, like you were talking about earlier, this is really the first time that we can sit down, hash stuff out, figure stuff out, all get on the same page. Everybody's tensions with this COVID stuff, it's been going on for a year now, everybody's over it, ready to get back to life as normal. So I think bottom line is it's just clarifying roles and expectations and getting on the same page. I don't think it's, you know, we don't want to look backwards, we want to look forward into where we're trying to go.
Sure, when it comes to health and human safety and people's lives, though, again, this is very straightforward to us, our recommendations are our recommendations, our case investigation's a case investigation, our reporting to the state, what we're required to, it's very cut and dry. And I do feel like there's a misunderstanding by this board on what it is we actually do and are required to do, because there has been no overreach, once.
So I think that that's part of the frustration, is differentiating between CD-PHE and the county. It's, I mean...
Provide an example.
Well, you're in a very, very tough, tough spot. I mean, you know, CD-PHE's telling you to do one thing, and the board's telling you to do something different. And I've had the opportunity to see it from both sides, and you are, I don't envy the spot that you're in, because you are in a very, very, very tough spot, and I think you've done a very good job handling that. It's just with these few little instances, things like that, but that's what this meeting's about, is to all get on the same page, clear the air, start with a fresh slate, and move forward. And, you know, I do have questions, you know, with stuff that you brought up earlier, just why, I mean, we'll get off topic on that, but I think that, you know, if we can all just kind of calm down and have a legitimate conversation, and get on the same page, and look forward instead of backwards, I think we can come to some good common ground. And you're right, Alice, there's a lot of stuff that we don't understand, or I can only speak for myself, that I don't understand that CD-PHE is telling you guys, and in my little pea brain, it doesn't make sense to me, you know, why this is different. And you and I have had these, a lot of windshield time and a lot of in-depth conversations about this. I guess bottom line, where I sit, or my point of view on it, is it's not the government's job to protect our healthcare, or our health, it's the government's job to protect our rights, and that's just how I view it. But you guys are RNs, you guys know what you're doing, you know, I don't, I can give a go to shot and that's about it, but I'll let somebody else talk for a second.
Ty, you are the second commissioner in one week who has said you guys have a very tough spot to be in. Jeff said it last week to me, when I was on the phone with him. The conversation that I've had with him at that point in time was, he's not the person that everybody's going to go to about, does my kid have to wear a mask at a game, or do I not have to wear a mask? Do I have to do this, do I have to do that? You guys don't hear that, we do.
Sure we do, Sarah.
I understand that, but you're not the person that they're going to come to first. They're going to come to us first, typically.
You might surprise.
It should be that way, wouldn't you think?
I can tell you that, like even with rec ball, taking my fifth grade son to practice in their little games, how many questions I got the first day, why do these kids have to wear masks? And that was the first night. So I mean, we do get a lot of questions, and that's why I think that this dialogue is important, and I think that that's why there's been a lot of tension and a lot of frustration, is that all gets pent up.
I think a lot of it is, we would like you to emphasize what policy has been set by the Board of County Commissioners, and I don't feel that that gets emphasized strong enough. When I walk into businesses and they're thinking that they're having to comply with state mandates, and it's us that's enforcing that, that sends me a signal that we're not being clear of what our position is. That's just the reality that I'm living. We have asked you to make sure with any communication you have out, that you make it clear that the Board of County Commissioners is not going to have the county enforce state mandates. I don't know if that, I suspect that message isn't getting out there loud and clear, and we want you to send that message. We realize it may be different than your medical recommendation, but that's an important piece of this, is they know what position we've taken, and you've got to be supportive of that.
And we are, and we always do. Reiterate again, I can't even give you, I cannot even recall the number of examples. I could sit here all day and give you examples, Gary, of where we have upheld your recommendation and your stance, every single day. We have hundreds of phone calls, we have, but Gary, I need to defend my department, because what you're saying is that we have not provided the message clear enough. It is our business's choice, you yourself have made that clear, it's our business's choice. If there's a business that chooses to wear masks, that's not because of us, that's because they are free citizens to make that choice. So to claim that it's because it's our fault for not getting that message out is outrageous.
I didn't say it was your fault, I said, I don't think it's been emphasized as strongly as I would like to see it.
And hopefully, with a PIO in place, that message, you can get whatever message out that you would like to get out to the public, that would be great. Because we honestly, when we're answering the calls, and we get the call and the question, we say, "No, per county health, you do not have to wear a mask, it's your choice, per our Board of County Commissioners. However, follow the guidelines of your school or whatever building you're in, if your school's choosing to follow CHASA, it's not our decision to say yea or nay." So we pass, and I've trained my staff very clearly on how to answer those questions, the events that occurred in Rio Blanco County this summer.
I'd like to speak to the events. The events came to me as soon as I started mid-August, and I will tell you that every event coordinator, every special event, every craft show, when they speak to me, I tell them first thing, "I want you to know, the commissioners are not going to shut you down, they're not going to enforce this." And then from there, I say, "Per the state level, we're on this with the dial, per this, per that, you know, this is where we are, this is our community spread." I give them numbers, and then I say, again, "Commissioners are not going to shut you down or ask you not to hold this. I have just given you the information, your organization can now make the decision." I have done that since the middle of August. So I know on the event part of it, that that communication has gone out.
That was one of the questions I was going to ask, girl, is do you suppose that through the message that you guys are sending to the local businesses, that the local, let's say they decide that they're, whatever message gets sent to them, they decide that that's not correct? It's kind of like with a lot of our parents right now, with our student athletes, and through the conversations we've had about where we went to support the schools, and the texts that we got this weekend over down in Ransley about all the kids having to do this and having to do that. I actually shared one with Alice, I sent it to her, that that's part of the stuff we get, is a normal thing, you know, and I actually responded back to the guy, and I said, "Hey, look, that's not their decision, nor is it ours." And I said, "Really what we're trying to do is get this done as a statewide deal, because at the end of the day, if you do it in Rio Blanco County, and Garfield comes down here and plays these kids, or Summit, and then they go back and their kids have got COVID, who do you think they're going to point the finger at?" So that really, that has to be a statewide thing, but a lot of times, I guess my point to that is, are businesses, are they changing some of that protocol for themselves? I mean, once, you know, because we've been pretty good, when we first started this thing, everything, we got it cleaned up, got everybody back to work, and everything was working. And I get a few funny phone calls once in a while from a business owner about, "Oh, God, we've got to do this." And I'm like, "Well, who told you that?" Well, nobody really, but I've been watching Facebook or the news, and that's what it says. And I guess that's my point. Do you think that has something to do with this disconnect a little bit?
I mean, it could be. People are able to educate themselves, and whether that education is Google versus CD-PHE, it's hard to say.
Absolutely, and we have not actually sent a message out to our businesses since it's been quite some time. Again, with Carly taking the position as PIO, it's been fantastic, because I can ask, "Okay, can you get this message out to the individuals?" But prior, we didn't have a PIO, so Holly Knowles, our environmental services employee, she is connected to all of our businesses. So early on, we said, "Okay, we need to make sure businesses know what's happening, it's their choice," but they do need to know, because guys, if they don't know, we could argue that the county then, that their local public health department didn't give them the opportunity to know, and they could have gotten shut down by the state. So again, we've rocked this line, and we'll continue to do that, and I do apologize for being defensive, and we can move on. But I also feel that you need to support your local public health agency.
It has to work both ways. It has to work both ways.
And it has worked on my end.
So if I may, even though it's not necessarily legal, I'll try to bootstrap it in by saying that having spent 30 years practicing law and listening to disputes between parties, generally the number one issue is communication. And that's certainly what I'm hearing today. And it's what I've heard all along and it's what we've experienced. You know, we could, we could get into weeds and talk specifics, ladies' social club and this and that. And it could come the other way. And I heard, I heard some stuff both ways. And the only way I know of, I'm sitting here thinking, how do we, how do we wrap this or move positive? How do we, how do we move forward in a positive step? And the only thing I can think of is more communication, more frank, open communication, where if you don't put it out there, you lose it. Whether it be you as commissioners have a weekly meeting with Alice every Friday to say, what happened this Friday, Alice? And by God, if you don't bring up your concern on Monday, you've waived it. And, you know, that's, that's the only, because there is a lot of positives. There are, there are some yellow flags, I get it. But the best way to address, dress it, I think, is just going to be opportunity for open and frank and honest communication moving forward.
And I go back to the three points from day one, or not day one, but I really think three major messages we're trying to get out. And that is be careful to make sure you're not overreaching, respect the fact that we set policy, and be professional. And a part of being professional is being able for us to communicate without being defensive in my opinion.
I guess I would, I would encourage you to set up some sort of a weekly thing where it's not, give us, not, don't give us the COVID stats, but let's talk about how the department is being managed. Because then if you hear something, you can say on the spot, hey, wait a minute, that strikes me as overreach. And then she knows. She knows not to do it again.
Well, we've got to be able to share with you what we maybe have heard. And you can simply say, no, that's not the case. But, and that's fine.
That would be great. And I've asked for that for months now.
Partners like the hospitals expressing the concerns they have, that's a big deal to us.
It's a big deal to me.
I know.
So please communicate that with me again.
We are, right now.
It would be much, much more effective, like Todd said, though, if that was at the time, if that was frequently, if that was frequently, and it was clear to me. Can I move on to the quick legal question that I do have for Todd that's really pressing?
Yes, you can.
Okay. So as far as the Public Health Order 2021, I've got copies here because I need to make sure that all of you have that information. What's in that public health order? What's in the recommendations we're getting from CD-PHE? So we are, again, it's similar to the deputization of by CD-PHE. Again, I don't work for CD-PHE, but we are an enrolled provider with a signed provider enrollment agreement to receive vaccine from CD-PHE. So I cannot in good conscience ignore the parameters in which I'm allowed to, you know, give those shots without communicating to this group, here are the risks. So I've got a copy of the provider letters. I've looked through them. I've highlighted them. I know you've seen some of these. So there's nothing that specifically states you cannot ask if you're a resident. You're not supposed to require identification.
Can I interrupt? Are you talking about Public Health Order 2101?
The one that talks about the new.
2101.
Here, let me give these to you, too.
And my interpretation was, it said, you can ask for ID, you can't ask for a government-issued ID.
It's very, very gray. And this is where, again, I just want Todd to, I want Todd to say, you can do this, you can't do that.
I mean, I know you've probably got it on any, but this just came out February 5th.
Oh, I get it.
And I've been told on a phone call that we will cease to receive a vaccine allocation if we do not follow these guidelines straightforward. It doesn't state this in any of these letters, but I've been told by Scott Bookman, who is our regional vaccine coordinator, that if we deny residents because they don't live in this county, we could risk getting our allocation.
We have emails that say it as well, I can forward. But I need you to, again, go through, I have copies of the two provider letters, one from February 5th, one from January 17th. And this is an example of where guidance is sometimes not clear. So I know that there was an email. Yeah, and I sent an email asking for guidance and the response was, what we've told from Carly was that as long as the wording in the newspaper says, we may require this, this is what may be required, you know, we're covered. But that doesn't answer my question, and then what should I be requiring at my actual clinic?
I think we were pretty direct in what our expectations were, knowing that we need to study up on these state mandates. But the direction we gave to you was they need to be affiliated with Rio Blanco County.
We've done that. And there's no question that we haven't done that.
I'm going to be honest with you. I know that when you were first contacted about, we've got people calling from four and a half hours away wanting to make sure they can get their vaccine. I personally heard you say, I won't turn anybody away. I heard that. So that's concerning because that's different, in my opinion, than saying, than worried about ID and all that. It's saying, we won't turn anybody away. So we did have people coming in.
That's out of context, Gary, and I take huge issue with that because I remember that phone call too. And the conversation was about someone who had called us, and this was before the letter came out. And I said, yes, and I said, I don't know. What do you think? I didn't know you were present because you didn't state that you were. But I said, I don't know. What do you think, Lori and Carly? Because I don't know, I'm not turning, turning people away. Absolutely, I said that because I'm a decent human being and I, so again, I need you to tell me.
So I think we were clear.
What we should do as far as verifying this residency. Because if someone comes through and I'm not asking for their ID and they don't live here, will then that be me violating the board's direction? So do you want me to ask for proof of residency? Do you want me to just simply ask people at the door with honor system? What is it that you would like me to do to ensure?
Well, you are required to ask for the residency because this Public Health Order in some paragraph IC says, the democratic, excuse me, the demographic information required to be collected includes first and last name, date of birth, gender identity, and address.
Right, and we reported it's on the form. So that's given. So I'm asking you then, do you want us looking at those forms, if it doesn't have a Rio Blanco County address, to ask them specifically how they're affiliated?
I think the verbiage we used before was affiliated with Rio Blanco County. No, that's great. You got to, I'll give my take on it, you get to read it. To me, that means anyone who is working here, anyone who is going to school here, such as the folks at a dinosaur. Dinosaur, I think logistically, it only makes sense that Rio Blanco County serviced them. They have a second home here if they somehow are affiliated. That doesn't mean they got a third cousin that lives here. That means they truly have connections to Rio Blanco County where they reside here part of the time or work here. Because to me, it doesn't make any sense to not give vaccinations to the workers that's coming up here five days a week to work out of range. We want them vaccinated if they won't. And I know that, that's just my opinion. What do you guys think as far as what we mean by that?
What is the content of the email from your district supervisor about this?
The, I'm trying, I don't, you can pull up an email, but we had a call last week where we have, we have weekly calls, regional. And he stated, you cannot turn people away because they don't live in your county. That is not, he just, he came straight out and said it because someone asked a question. And we're not answering, asking questions, we're just listening in. So that specific verbiage is not in this order. However, so the calls that I get, that was probably the first one. And I got a call from Carly saying, well, what do we do with this? And I said, well, we're not advertising to people out of state. I don't know. It was the first time it'd come up. The people that have called us asking have been people who live here with parents, they want them vaccinated, they're staying here for an extended period of time. I've said, since your direction, I've said, no, that's not accurate. We can't, because we're only vaccine residents plus dinosaur unless they work here, long-term runner or second homeowner. So, you know, again, that's one of those gray areas. So just as far as verification, if their form, correctly phrased wrong, what you're saying is if the form, if they don't have a Rio Blanco County address on their form, when they sign in, we ask, what is your affiliation with Rio Blanco County? And then do we, do we or don't we ask for any verification?
I think, for me, the biggest concern is not having enough vaccinations to take care of our people. I mean, if, you know, because nobody wants to wait in a line five hours in Denver, you know, if they can drive four and a half hours and get up here and get it and, you know, make it back. So I think, for me, my biggest concern is, and I guess the repercussions or questions that we would have to answer is, why can I not get my shot? Why do you not have enough vaccinations? Because it's my understanding, we're allocated based off a population and.
That's changed now, completely changed. It's based on your, on demand. And again, it's addressed in this order. Like, that's the whole point. They want people just vaccinated. So that's why they added this clause about not having to be in the county. So however, I completely agree with you in that I, that would concern me if I was seeing it, and I'm not. So the minute, of course, that I saw that trend, I would be very disturbed. So I'm glad that our messaging is saying those, those things so that at least that catches people who might be looking on our website. But it still doesn't answer the question what to do when they're at the door. Because.
Well, Alice, I think.
It's hard.
Where this order got changed a week ago was they had a, but they, but they had a ton of, of issues on the front range. They had people traveling all over over there trying to go find a, and I think it had more to do with not public health, but more Walgreens and some of the big pharmacies over there that were turning people away, you know?
What's wrong, and I truly am asking, what's wrong with including, you know, on our, on our little form, birth, identity, what's wrong with including a line, I do or don't have a connection to Rio Blanco County, my connection is blank? And if they fill that in and there's a connection, they go on the fast pass at Disney to get their vaccine. If they check no and they don't have a connection to Rio Blanco County, you have to wait until we service everybody here today from Rio Blanco County. That seems compliant with the governor's order. It seems to satisfy the commissioners on a day-to-day basis. We're making dang sure our residents get it first and then we'll satisfy the governor's order and give it to anyone else. Is that, is that a middle line that everybody can?
Todd, through this new order is, is, let's say the girls give 4,000 doses. They're going to get that, I mean, if you, it sounds to me like the way I read this, that if you guys can give 4,000 doses a week, they're, they're going to facilitate that. So I guess if that can help out our neighboring communities, but again, I don't have a problem with that.
As long as we have capacity. And as long as we have capacity, because obviously we don't want that happening either. I mean, we've already are working overtime. So I will actually, I don't know how you two feel about that. I like that idea. And my only question was going to be, before you said, then at the end of the line, if there's still available doses, you can have one, was going to be, then we have it on record that we're asking, as long as that isn't going to be something that could jeopardize our vaccine allocation based on what we're seeing.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. And I actually, I didn't read the news story, but I saw today where Colorado got like another close to 30,000 doses. So I think, I think we're going to be okay. I think we're going to be okay on that. But you would know more than anybody on that.
I think, I mean, we've seen it slow down tremendously. Obviously, and we haven't had to turn anyone away. We had, we go down our list to call to get extra doses in the night. But we do, I would worry only when we get to the bigger tiers. So they are paying up to a much bigger tier. Obviously, we'd have to play it by ear. But I do like the idea of the check mark because we don't have the time to be, you know, checking IDs or bills or asking even, is a lot of extra work. So a checkbox with the understanding if we have leftover doses and people have been there. Call Public Health or email Public Health. Yeah, and there's a form.
A job form that you can just fill out.
Yep.
Because I agree, don't waste doses if at all possible.
Yeah. We ordered some new ports too that were suggested because I asked, I reached out and asked after our last meeting. And we've been able to get 11 doses out of some. We've been being extra careful in our, pulling our doses in our vials. So we're always willing to take criticism and guidance from you, always. And we'll always try to improve. What are we going to do about the communication schedule? Do we want to set something up now? Because actually, our last Board of Health meeting, that was brought up and it was said, let's set up a time to meet with Alice weekly. And I was told that you'd get with me with a time that would work and that hasn't happened yet. Let's decide that right now so I know, my staff knows, okay, we're going to be meeting with commissioners next week at this time, so it's not another month.
Alice, what's the best day for you guys? Is there a better day of the week or a better morning, afternoon? I mean.
Wednesdays, because we don't have any scheduled recurring Scott shot clinics on Wednesdays. Wednesdays would be great. Tuesdays are busy for you.
Yeah, but that's just once a month.
I think middle of the week's better, just in general, because of our clinic schedules we have right now.
Todd, let me ask this. So that we wouldn't have to meet, is there some way that we could rotate out where, let's say, Ty meets with the girls for a couple of weeks, Gary goes and I meet with them or however that works? So you get a, because we can reiterate the message back to the three of us, or those are two, but.
I would prefer that it's all three of you, at least these initial meetings at first.
You realize that requires a publication in the paper.
Yeah, you gotta, we have to notice it. That's what I was thinking, Sarah.
What if we have set like work sessions that are more frequent than maybe just during the normal time? So instead of once a month, we had a, two work sessions a month scheduled and then we can still touch base with one commission? Because this was happening at the beginning. You were in my office all the time. Ty has had ICS, I had ICS report. That stopped, completely stopped, the minute that we started experiencing our first community outbreak. And Simpson and I have been running and running and running, we all have, and we have felt like there's not a good way to communicate with you guys. So I think you're right that that can solve a lot of these issues. Because you would know what was going on with our hospitals, with our schools, with our sports teams, with whoever. You would know exactly, I'm totally transparent. I can show you all my emails and you can be on any phone call I have with CD-PHE. So I think that maybe that would solve that if we could have a scheduled work session with all of them, maybe more than just once a month to address any big concerns.
To address concerns.
Right. Check-ins weekly from one of you to just kind of ask you things.
You know what we could do? Because at first, like, we don't have a meeting that first Tuesday of the month. We could do it on that Wednesday and say the third Wednesday of the month. That would be a, and we could just get Lori to do a regular posting of that, that where there are just every two weeks that we do a work session for an hour, an open work session so if we need 10 minutes or an hour.
Yeah, that'd be great. That would be good. Does that work for you guys?
What works, what time works the best?
We test from 10 to 11 every day right now. So anytime after 11 usually is like 11:30.
Do we have after and not before?
Yeah.
So we'd have to accommodate the travel time for Sarah?
Well, we could even do that stuff on a conference call or a Zoom. You don't have to travel. Or would one o'clock be better?
Yeah, I think afternoons would be better.
Time to clean up, buy a lunch or whatever.
Yeah, one o'clock would be great.
First and third Wednesday of each month.
Can you send us an invite to Bill's car? It makes it easy.
Let me add one more quick question, and this was specific to the website. I believe we, everything that, every suggestion you had, we took to the company, they worked through it with us. So if you have any other suggestions, just I hope it looks like the way you wanted it to with the. way you wanted it to, with the historic, current. Again, just it's a, it can be a work in progress, so just let us know, and we can, we can work on that. We actually have taken community feedback, too, and changed a couple of things that fall in mind.
Concern I have, because I watch that pretty closely, and there must be something I'm not aware of. Because when I add up the last two weeks' worth of new cases or positives on the bar graph, they typically don't sync up with the number of active cases. And I realize there's only one day a week that would sync up, but it's still not.
Because that's age. The bar graph is only by age group, and that's not always entered.
The number of active cases.
Could I share that?
And if you look at Makers and Rangeley's for the last two weeks, two full weeks, shouldn't that be the same total as you're getting for active cases? Or active cases, that would be the maximum number of active cases you should be showing. What am I guessing?
So part of that, Gary, is active cases are still within their isolation quarantine.
Which is what?
So isolation is somebody who's positive, and it's taken from either 10 days from symptom onset, or the day they tested positive, but aren't asymptomatic. So sometimes, they come to us seven days into it, so they're not active for that full 10 days. They're new positive, but they're maybe only positive for two, they may be only active for two more days because of symptom onset.
So if anything, the total number of actives would be less than what those two weeks' worth of, not more?
It depends, but usually, yes, that's right.
Be more.
So it's populated.
Could it be more?
Active over the 14 days.
The only, because it's by report date. So the only way it could be more is if there was some old case from three weeks ago that we hadn't entered on the spreadsheet.
Consistently more active cases than.
The bar graph totals are less than what the total you're showing is active cases. I've watched that number.
No, it's, the number, I, you should probably come to one of the sessions with this gentleman, because again, this part I don't, we have the numbers. And again, we have the most up-to-date numbers that you can have, and you'd find anywhere. So we literally enter in on a spreadsheet every positive we get, and every day I re, I refresh it. So if something's not adding up on here, we need to address that with Tableau, because we're reporting accurate numbers.
I know. But I'm still catching at it. And there's, I'm not understanding what you consider how long that active case is, is over 14, or, or something.
Yeah, okay. Well, and that hasn't been brought to my attention, so I'd have to look. But for active case, reported in the last 14 days versus active case, it is a different number. We can't, symptom onset date is what I look at. When I send the weekly email to Carly, which is what I've been doing this whole time, that's more accurate of a number than what's on here. Because I'm going through and looking specifically to make sure, okay, if this person's symptom, we didn't get a report till the 14th, but their symptoms started way back. They're only just now testing positive. That wouldn't necessarily be included in our active cases. So I don't see how it could be more, unless it's something to do with the calculation and the, and the back of the math here.
But there was about three difference. What's shown on the big bold number of act, current active cases was three more than what the last two weeks added up of positives.
Do you mean on the current situation where it says cases in the last 14 days? That wasn't adding up on the bar graph? Is that what you're?
You said total active cases.
The only thing I can think of is that residency is a part of that. So it's breaking it down into Meeker and Rangeley. And if it's unknown, maybe it doesn't assign it until we put Meeker and it doesn't throw it on that bar. But each graph is driven by a different column. So I just have to ask Phil how that works. Because that's not always real time. So as long as we've got, you know, a number and a report date on our spreadsheet, it includes, it's the case count. So that one's super accurate, because I do that every day. But if it's broken down by town, there's always a chance it could be a couple of days before we're able to go in and make sure it's got the right town in there, however that's split up. That could be what's going on. We'll see. I'll ask him about it. Screenshots would be helpful, too, if you ever see anything. Like, we did have a community member that took a screenshot of something, because she clicked on something and then it just didn't look right. And she said, here's a suggestion. So we went in and we fixed that right away. I said, Phil, hey, this is really, could be misleading. Could you fix this? And he's like, oh, yeah, that's an easy fix. So just let me know.
Todd, have you got anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I do, one more question.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, afterthought. So we're still in yellow, right? Is there, and?
If you're asking me what level of dial per CDPE that we are in, we're in level yellow.
Yes. But Moffit.
As of Saturday, when they changed to 2.0.
Moffit's in blue. And so how close are we to the criteria, or meeting that criteria to moving into blue?
We're pretty close. It's all, now it's based, it's more frequent, so it's every week. And our, we saw, we were seeing a decrease. Last week, we had a little increase. So we're hoping it continues to go down this next few weeks. And then we would be in blue, I would think, within a couple of weeks, depending on that.
My understanding, what I heard.
I think now we have to request.
The onus is on the counties to know.
And I would love a, a help and support with that, if we can. Again, this is, we are so stretched with vaccines right now and testing and case investigations. If I could get some help, like you originally offered, to reach out to the contractor, anything would help, from Vic, whether it's Vicki or Lori, anyone. We will make sure we do whatever we have to do, but.
Can you hit me with that again? What specifically are you asking help on when we're referring to requesting us moving back? What do you need help on?
I actually don't even know, guys, what I need help with, but I know it's going to be more work, and so I might need support, so I can get it done on time. Absolutely, and we will. But I might need.
You need help figuring out that process.
Yeah.
I think I found where that form is on CDPE's website. It's pretty noticeable on there. It looks like a fairly easy form, basically. I did go through the entire process. But I think maybe that's something that we can help with, in a correction model.
Because I haven't even had time to go through everything yet.
And Carly, I, I looked at that as well. And I think what happens is if you can basically cut and paste what the information you're already putting there, right over on top of that form, send it back to the state, and then they'll review it. It's probably going to be another week in the timeframe, but at least then you get that request back from them to change the dial.
So as soon as, like, if Alice can communicate, and I think Alice and I are working pretty good with this Monday communication thing, it might have to be more frequent with the dial change. But if she can communicate to me that we are ready for a dial change, then on behalf of the county, I could request the change on CDPE's website.
I think we clearly need to be looking at it weekly to see if maybe we're there.
And I am looking at it weekly in terms of case counts and data and reporting. I mean, that's a job in and of itself. Most county health departments are not my size. So, but yes, we'll get it done however we need to, and we'll do it the day we're able to.
Carly, or Alice, would that.
No question.
Could Carly help you with some of that?
I would love her help.
Why don't you two get together and visit?
Yeah, we'll, we'll touch base about it. By the end of the week, we'll, we'll make sure we have a plan for every week going forward. I have no desire to stay any higher on any level of the dial, let me make that clear. I'm just busy and working for free. So, all right, thank you very much. We'll look out for that email with the invitation for a work session.
That'd be good.
Are we adjourned?
All right. We are adjourned.
Oops, 4:10. Phil, thank you.
You're welcome.